We're not used to this, folks. So we'll just wait until it actually comes on. Okay, so we're on now. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the inaugural Master Plan Steering Committee kickoff meeting this evening. Melissa, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Let's lead. The flag of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's nice to see everybody doing it together at once. Everybody.
It's a family.
All right. Many of us know each other, not all of us know everybody. So what I'm going to ask is when I start at your end, and just a little bit about yourself, why you want to be on this committee, and what you can see as a possible future for it. And it will take, you know, a minute, 90 seconds or so for each of us.
Okay. Gary McRoy. I am coming to this committee from the Sustainability Committee, which I just joined this past year. My background is I'm a civil engineer with the Amicorp Engineers and have worked on sustainability projects in the past, as well as familiar with the design and engineering process and construction process. First time on a town committee of, other than the Sustainability Committee, though I have been involved with public recreation committees and stuff like that in the past, as well as scouts. In terms of what I'm hoping to contribute is just to be, you know, I'm very interested in the future of Littleton. I've been resident for 20 years, have kids in the school system, and I think I have some good ideas as to how, as to how we move forward and make sure that we, if we put a lot of effort in putting together a master plan, I'd like to see that it doesn't just sit on a shelf, that it becomes reflected in some of the regulations or rules or policies that we have in the, in the, in the town.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks.
Thanks for joining.
I'm John Beilefeld. I live on 19 Ernie's Drive, and I've been in Littleton since 1985. I used to live on 16 Edsel Road before I went to Ernie's Drive. I'm a real estate agent, and I work with Layer Realty Partners, and I've seen this town grow, and I've seen it change, and a lot of things have happened, and I just wanted to contribute to where this town is going in the future, and I'm very interested in this town, and I really like it. My kids grew in, grew up in this town, went to Littleton High School, and, and moved on. So, that's about it, what I have.
Thanks for joining too, John. Paul?
Okay. Paul Glavia, I'm currently serve on the Finance Committee and the Economic Development Committee, and many years ago when the last master plan update was conducted, I was a selectman, although I was not on the steering committee for the master plan at that time, I was very interested in it. And I think there's some good in it, but I think there was a lot of missed opportunities and a lot of lessons to be learned from that process, so I was very excited in seeing the master plan be revisited and relaunched. Professionally, I have a consulting business working on marketing and permit approval process.
My name's Mike Fontanella. I'm representing the school committee. I've been on the school committee for nine years, I've been in Littleton for 16 years. I work in Littleton as well. I think what I'm trying to do is bring a perspective from the school committee experience that I have, but also as a citizen of the town, as some of the other members have said, you know, Littleton is changing, it's changed a lot in the 16 years that I've been here, and I think it's going to continue to change, and I think the, the goal is to manage the transition, and I think an effort like this will go a long way towards helping that.
Hi, I'm Melissa Hebert. During my day job, I work for Hewlett Packard. I'm a kind of a project manager, if you will, working on software there, also on the committee as a selectman, and this was actually one of the reasons that made me really passionate about running selectmen, because I thought this is a great opportunity. I got taught about the master plan and how we need to revamp that, and I think Mike put it really well, it's about the transition, we've got to grow. So how do we get there, and then how do we also use this tool actively in making decisions during our normal daily activities? So anyway, I'm home here, I've lived here for over 20 years, my parents live here, my friends live here, they've got kids in the school system. I love this town, passionate about the lake area, so I'm just excited to be a part of it.
Thanks, Melissa. Paul Avella, we've been in town 11 years now, have to have lived around the world, and we settled in Littleton, and we absolutely love it being here, and so to certainly be on the steering committee here is an opportunity to help keep the town going in the direction that we saw it going when we first arrived here, and the improvements that are available for us to make. As retired Air Force fighter pilot, I now do program management, working for a small consulting company on contract to the US Air Force at Hanscom. So it's that day job, as Melissa says, program management, and currently one of the selectmen had been on the school committee for eight years, and a couple other committees in town and civic organizations. So again, great opportunity, and certainly appreciate being with you all this evening, and looking forward to all of you out in the audience coming forward and working with us also, because it won't be just the 12 people on the committee, it's going to be all 9,000 people living in the town of Littleton helping us out. Thank you.
Good. Richard Crowley, I've moved to Littleton almost 40 years ago, so that makes me old. No, a town, am I a town?
10 more years, Rich.
Oh, man. I got involved in the town politics about 10 years ago with the PMBC. I've been on the PMBC ever since, been a part of the middle school project and the Russell School Project and various other projects going around town. I'm one of the members of the planning board that are appointed to this committee, and I was part of the, or at least attended some of the sessions in the last master plan update, and I thought it was very interesting to see how that, that evolved, came about, and was implemented, and I'm pretty excited to be a part of this, this master plan update.
My name is Michael Zeldin. I live at 11 Low Ann Street, and compared to the other folks at this table, I'm a relative newcomer. In fact, I'm barely coming up on the second year of residence here. However, I want you to know that a fair amount of research was done before we decided to move here from a more crowded place, somewhere near Boston, also known as Cambridge. However, not influenced by my past there. I'm a molecular biologist by trade, and I've been involved in the world of investment, startup companies, organizing new companies in the so-called cutting edge of technology. The reason I came on the committee is because this is a good opportunity for me not only to learn more about the town, but to get involved in perhaps one of the more significant political activities of the town. Political, I mean with a capital P, because as far as I'm concerned, not only are we going to learn a great deal from the residents about where they think, and I represent the residents at large, along with at least one other member here, where the residents want to go, but also, we're going to have to be persuasive ourselves if we come up with a plan that puts together something that either is not out there or should be out there. So I view what we're doing here tonight as beginning of a political process as much as a technical one, and I'm looking forward to working with all these wiser heads that have been here longer and understand the town much better than I will, can be, and given the life expectancy, I probably won't ever be able to achieve Richard or Paul's or, so this is, you know, I'm basically the baby of the group, but as you know, babies cause trouble.
Peter Scott, Scott Road, been here for, I don't know, age myself, 55 years, am I now a townie?
You're older than me, Peter.
I've been here longer than him, but the Glavia name's been here forever, like the Knoxes too, I believe, so, and I went through the entire school system, off to college in Dakotas, I'm self-employed, and I lost the coin toss, that's why I'm here, from the planning board. No, actually, I'm interested in trying to make the town, or help the town go in a direction that's positive and can influence, you know, the long-term goals of what the, the town really needs, and I believe wants, and that's about it, my dear.
Joe Ficocello, I'm new to the town, I think I've been here for three years, I've been beat by, by one. And I think master plan is a very important thing for a town, as we all do. It's a living, breathing document that is sort of the cornerstone of what we develop into and how we proceed, looking at the past, and also what the future can hold, and I think it is really important that it doesn't just sit on a shelf. So it's a matter of kind of helping it so that it's what it needs to be, so that just by its usefulness, it doesn't sit on a shelf. That's kind of it. And my background is as a landscape architect, so it's nice to be a part of helping develop a master plan for my own community as opposed to another one, and I'm excited to get started.
And we just do an introductions. It's your turn.
Ed Quigendall, I've got a company called Landscape Barrestons, I've been in business since 2002, I'm a landscape design build contractor, and that's pretty much it, lived in Littleton since 2010.
I like you. We're going to, can we also instill a little coin box up here where every time you say um, and ah, and and, and repeat yourself, you put a dollar in it, because I'm pretty sure we can have a field. Turn field by maybe June.
You'll be the leading contributor?
It's possible, but I don't have, I don't have a problem throwing a buck in for every time ah, and ah, ah, ah.
Sorry, ah, and ah, yeah?
No, you didn't. That's why I like you. You're poof, and done.
Aaron?
I'm Lauren Toohill. I'm, I'm the entire planning staff for the town, looking forward to staffing the master plan update steering committee. I was, I was on staff the last time we went through the master plan. For me, the best part of the last master plan was the visioning process that we went through before we started working on the master plan, that really seemed to solidify a lot of the ideas that had been floating around. And I think we'll bring a lot of those forward with the town wants open space, wants to maintain the small rural character, but with added amenities. Same story from 12 years ago, but it would be great to hear how we make that happen.
Thanks for helping us out.
Of course.
But this evening, folks, we've got the pleasure and the honor of having two chairmen, one of our board of selectmen, Joe Knox, and then Mark Martinari from the planning board. This is pretty much a joint venture between the two boards, statutorily, planning board with the prime responsibility of having a master plan for the community. They're going to give us a little bit of perspective this evening, and I'm going to, Joe, you first, please.
First, I, I'm so happy to hear all the comments that are made by the people who join the committee, because a lot of things that I was going to say, you've already brought up. The first thing is, there's no document or any committee, in my opinion, that's more important than this. This document, and it's been mentioned, this does not get shelved, and I think we've all at one point or another worked on the committee or did some work, and sometimes you get frustrated. This gets referred to back periodically all the time, even this year, and it was done, and Mark took, he's going to probably tell you how long ago it was, but I think it's important that the time we're doing it is because we've gone through a lot of changes in town, changes are still going on. You have a document to work from, which is good, that some of the basic things are there, but it has to be changed, it has to be relooked at from a different perspective, from different people, because we can't just keep the same thing that we've had. So this is the opportunity to take each one of those topics, whether it's housing, whether it's economic development, whether it's open space, whether it's recreation, any of those things. We have to relook and see what we think the town wants to have, and the best part has been mentioned also by the people speaking up here, is that get the townspeople involved. This wants to be a document that's out there, that everyone participates in. It's going to be up to you how you do it, but you have the fundamental ideas that need to be addressed. I think the one advantage you have, although a committee that Mr. Glavia put me on a while ago, the Town Government Study Committee, I remember going to that first meeting and looking around at the eight members and going, what are we going to do? We had no document to even look at. At least in this committee, you can reflect back on what people thought 13 years ago, 14 years ago, and even further, to make that document actually possible. So it's, it's a great opportunity for town, it's a great opportunity for the Board of Selectmen, and I won't speak, you can speak, but a great opportunity to get things together so you put a document that can stand by its own, be referred back to all the time, and saying, you know, if you go back here, this is what the townspeople said, and I think we have an outstanding committee that can do that.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, and I couldn't agree more with Joe. 13 years ago, a lot of people got together, put a lot of hard work and time and effort into, really the first master plan that this town's seen in 30 years. I think everybody that worked on it would be, is ecstatic that this board is going to take what they started with 13 years ago and revamp it. The town is different than it was 13 years ago. Hopefully you'll get more voices, people that have moved into town, found what a gem Littleton is, and want to make it and keep it the great place that we all know Littleton is, and that's going to take the 12 people and whatever public input you can get from the public hearing is going to have and everything else, to take it to the next level. Littleton is different now than it was 13 years ago, but 13 years ago, we looked for growth, we looked for vision, we've got the point, we've addressed a lot of economic issues that we had from back then, and now it's time for this board to take the planning process to the next level. Being on the planning board, this is what we're going to use as our backbone as we move forward in the next 10, 15, 20 years, and we look forward to public input and this board's input as to how we shape the town of Littleton in the future.
Thanks very much, Mark. Appreciate it. I think what's wonderful we see here tonight is we have 55 years in town, and we have two years in town, and a whole bunch of us somewhere scattered in between that. So whether through the privilege of birth, or the fortune, the good fortune of having moved here by choice, we've got a very diverse group of folks, at least in backgrounds, so I think it's going to be very helpful in trying to achieve what both of you have just said that you'd like to see come out of this. What I'd like to do at this point is, if you all agreeable to this, I'm going to turn it over to Keith. Keith is going to run the elections as we pick a chairman, vice chairman, and the clerk for our committee here going forward, and then we'll progress on that, and then Keith, after that, is going to then give us some of the regulatory, statutory, policy, and a little bit of introduction on the actual elbow grease part of this, is what we have to do to get it going.
Happy to do that. I'll even do the short introduction of Keith Bergman, which is that I've been your town administrator now for seven and a half years, I'm in my 34th year as a municipal manager in Massachusetts, this is my fifth town. I have a master's degree in city and regional planning from Harvard, the Kennedy School of Government, all, and it just so happens that in 34 years of being a municipal manager, this is the first time I've managed to be in a town at the point when they are updating their master plans. New, new experience. Province town on Cape Cod, we had local comprehensive plans, which had to be consistent with a regional policy plan, but first, my first master plan update, so I'm really excited about getting started here. As with any new committee, one of the first tasks is to organize, and typically our town boards have a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk.
Excuse me, could I ask, just to interrupt, I don't want us to, what in this instance is the role of the chairman, and it's very nice to have organization, but in particular...
Right. Well, that was my next sentence.
What is, what are we do, what are we doing this for?
Yeah, the purpose of the chair is to convene the meeting, to run, to run the meeting, and to approve the agenda as posted, that's basically the function of the chair. That the function of the vice chair is to act in the absence of the chair. Typically, what we do is, say at the Board of Selectmen level, the chair and the vice chair would often consult on any organizational issues about whether it's potential dates to offer for meetings, or preparing a draft agenda, those sorts of things. The board as a board, functions as a board, you've, and you function at posted public meetings, and outside of the meetings, you don't do anything, that unless it's, unless it's specific tasks that are assigned by the committee, or, or it's initiatives on your own as an individual, but the work of the committee as a committee only gets done at posted public meetings. You may, as you go through it, find that you want to organize and have subcommittees or other, or other things like that, and, and as this process lays out in the coming months and years, that, you know, you may see what you want to do there, but, but the role of the chairman is to convene the meeting and to run the meeting. The, and the vice chair assists in that and substitutes when the chair's not available. The role of the clerk is, is, is less well-defined. Typically, in some boards, if the clerk does the minutes, that's not our, that's not what we're envisioning here, that the, that by, by having the planning board assign its staff to, to assist, that that, that that process will be covered. Still, there are things that the clerk can do. I know the planning board, I see that the clerks read public hearing notices and perform other sort of, you know, functions like that. So those are the, those are the three job titles that we have for, appointed for our, for our various boards. You would select from your membership, you have all 11 of the 11 appointees here today, that I would suggest that the, that the first order of business would be to, would be for you to elect a chairman from among your membership, and for that purpose, I invite anyone to make nominations.
I think I'd like to nominate Paul as the chairperson, if that's...
You want to specify which Paul?
That would be my nomination. Paul Avella. Oh, that's right. We have two Pauls here. Paul Avella.
I'll second that. I'd like to nominate Paul Glavia as vice chair.
We'll do that, we'll do that next. Are there other chairs, are there other, any other nominations for chair? Going once, okay, we'll declare those nominations closed. The proposal is to elect Paul Avella as, as chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, very good. Mr. Chairman, you can conduct the rest of the...
You're welcome. Thank you. You didn't say it was going to go like that.
Okay, open nominations for vice chair.
Well, seeing not to be repeat, I'm repetitive, Paul Glavia for vice chair.
Is there a second?
I'll just ask a question. I defer to any member of the, or one of our two planning board members as a, you know, a matter of protocol, it, you know, but I'm wondering, either way.
I don't have, you know, the, at meetings, I don't have a problem with, you know, coming to the majority of the meetings, I just, anytime outside of this meeting, I would probably be hard pressed, and I'm not sure whether or not that would fall into your jurisdiction or not. I mean, I, sometimes I just don't even know what date it is.
No, I, I, I'm sure I'll sink my hands into this, you know, frequent regularity, but I think it's probably appropriate to have a planning board member be the vice chair.
All right, good. I would love to nominate Richie, but to be quite honest with you, this...
Well, in fact, but to defer to Paul Glavia, you were actually a part of the last...
Really, no, that, that shouldn't factor in too much. I, I think it's, it's important to have a planning board member, just, you know, one of the issues going forward is that the master plan document needs to be enacted and used by the planning board, so I think...
But a courtship election.
If you think PJ, PJ's not going to allow us to meet on a date when he can't make it anyway, so it's not...
Paul, I'll talk to you this, I want you to propose a nomination then.
Yeah, well, all right, but I, you're going to withdraw, I appreciate you. I'll decline the nomination, but I would nominate Rich Crowley then to be vice chair.
Second.
Oh, boy.
Okay, Rich Crowley nominated in second, no debate, I should think. Well done. All right. All those in favor, Rich?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Congratulations, bud.
Well, thank you.
Chairman? Now open nominations for clerk. You can volunteer too.
I'll nominate Paul Glavia to be the clerk.
Second.
Well done. As long as there's no minutes taken.
I want to see if you can wiggle off the hook twice.
Very well. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, Paul Glavia nominated in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
How long do these terms run?
Definitely.
Definitely, until...
Impeachment.
Until vacancies arise.
As a follow-up to that, Keith, you mentioned months and years.
Yeah.
What is a typical lifespan for an effort like this?
Two years. I, I think it's reasonable to think that from start to finish, that, that, we'll go over in a minute what the, what the timetable is for even bringing your consultant on board, which could be, you know, some number of months, Bonnie, we'll, we'll distribute a handout which suggests that it'll, that it could take you as long as next, until next January to actually award a contract, and then once they get started, it, it would be, you know, a year, year and a half, beyond that to, to complete the project.
And when we get down to number four, on the draft timeline, and it says for procuring consultant services, and we'll also talk a little bit about a timeline, also, Mike. Keith, you want to take us away a little bit on some of our responsibilities?
Sure. The, let me just find it here. We had sent out the link that's in the general law of what is, what, what does the, what do the state laws think a master plan document is, and our, the master plan that Littleton adopted in 2002 certainly reflects these, these points as well, but I thought it would be well to just, to just go, go through, that a master plan consists of goals and policy statement, a land use plan element, housing element, economic development, natural and cultural resources, open space and recreation, services and facilities, circulation, i.e. transportation, and an implementation program. All of those things are, should sound familiar, they're, they're in the current master plan. Some of those documents, some of those elements were, are in various stages of updating. We just updated the housing production plan, which translates easily to a housing element, and the process of updating the recreation and open space plan, which would, which would fit nicely into, into that. And the, the role of the master plan update steering committee has been envisioned as by the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board in establishing this group. Board of Selectmen and the planning board in establishing this group, is to assist the planning board in updating the town's master plan, including a preparation of a review and fatigue of the existing plan document and a proposed scope of services for the update. So, initially at least, you're sort of in the, you're in the procurement business because preparing a scope of services, issuing that RFP document, and hiring a consultant is the first, is the first thing to be done, and that's a long process to go through that, and a lot of steps involved. The, and we would need to be following the state statutory procedures for making, for public entities making procurements. In terms of where we are in funding, that, that we have a total of $113,612 that has been appropriated by town meetings thus far. $100,000 at the annual town meeting a year ago. We had hoped to add $50,000 in November. We didn't, we couldn't, we needed to divert some of the funds for other projects, so we've got $13,600 and change. We are requesting an additional $100,000 next Monday night as part of the capital plan for, for 2016 that will come before town meeting. So, the hope is to bank $213,000 to be able to go forward with the project. The town meeting articles indicate that the funds for the master plan are to be expended by the planning board to update the master plan. Since the, and so that means that the planning board is the approving authority under the, under the statute for purposes of issuing the contract. I'll, I'll go through this document. In fact, Mr. Chairman, if you could hand out the memo that Bonnie had-
Yep.
That's a prepared, here's, here's a hard copy of what will be, we're looking at at the screen. That there is, under the, under the state procurement laws, that we're, we're, the issuing a request for proposals, which will contain price and non-price proposals. It essentially requires that there be a designer selection committee. This will sound very familiar to your vice chairman, as a longtime member of the Permanent Municipal Building Committee, we're going through this a lot. But that the designer selection committee, which need not be the contracting authority, which need not be the approval authority, is nevertheless the assigned group that goes through all of the steps necessary in the procurement, and then makes the recommendation to the approving authority. Our read, the staff's read of what that means, is that you, that this board, the steering committee, is the, is to fulfill the role of the designer selection committee. That is, you'll, you've got representation from the planning board here and the Board of Selectmen, that your, your function will be to be making recommendations about what the procurement looks like, that you would be reviewing, that you would be preparing the request for proposals in, in the form that gets issued. You would be reviewing the proposals that are received and rating them according to the criteria in the RFP document, and ultimately, making a recommendation to the approving authority, the planning board, on who to, who to be hired. So, what, what our assistant town administrator for finance and budget, Bonnie Holston, who's also the chief procurement officer, has done is prepare this guideline of taking the statutory steps and, and imposing a, a draft timeline, anyway, of how much, how much time do we think it'll, it'll take to do the various steps? We're also mindful that some of these initial steps are going to be during summer months, so that, that we're looking at, for example, issuing the, the RF, or a few document by, by September, which would give us some, some time after town meeting and, and over the course of the summer to, to draft the, draft the document. I'll, I'll let you take a look at what the specific timeline steps are. There will be, I think there'll be plenty of opportunity for maybe collapsing some of the timelines. Maybe we can do better. Maybe we'll find that we want to spend more time in, in developing some of these processes. But the, but the endpoint that's projected is, that Bonnie projects, is somewhere by this December or January, we, we should be in a position to have the committee bring, you know, having reviewed the proposals, interviewed the, the proposers, and present a, a contract for execution by the, by the planning board. You'll have the assistance of staff along the way. It's a procurement, it has to be approved by the chief procurement officer, Bonnie. You'll have the staff support of Maron from the planning department, and I'll also be, I'll also be involved in your, attending your meetings. And as necessary, we'll, you know, the rest of the town staff is, whenever you need them to talk about a particular project, will be, will be happy to, happy to come here. So, that's, that's a, a general, a general overview. I think that it's, that I think one thing to think about with the preparation of the request for proposals is that even in that process, you may want to ensure that there's sufficient public input on what you're doing, so that, that if you prepare a draft of what the scope of services looks like, the, great opportunity to have public input, or public hearing or something, to build that into the process, because if ever there was a process-oriented document, this is one. The, the more valuable, the document at the end will be much more valuable if the process by which you arrive at that document involves the community and affected groups to the greatest degree. So, we didn't want to put a timeline out there for discussion that was too short. It might be, I think it's, I think it's manageable, and if we decide that it seems to be taking too long, then we can look for ways to speed it up, because I'm sure the town's anxious to dive into it along with us.
Questions of Keith?
Yeah. Has anybody on this board done an RFQ, or you have RFPs in public work?
Federal procurement, not, not, not state or local, but the federal.
Very similar, good. Yeah, the town, we've had, the town has almost a standard, you know, fairly thick document, but, and I'm used to doing that. That's what I do for a living. I'm a program manager, and, in public work in Massachusetts. And the, the most interesting and fun part will be developing the scope of work, because even though it's a fairly thick document, most of that stuff won't, won't matter to any of us. It's, it's the scope of work that we'll get right down, that one page that describes what we're looking for in terms of the consultant. And then, and the other fun part is reviewing all the proposals that come in at the other end. That's going to be work. That's going to be a lot of reading for all of us.
The other thing that we have access to, that there are a lot of communities around us who are updating the master plans, and they're issuing RFPs, and they're, you know, inviting proposals. So, we've got at least half a dozen recent samples of, of RFPs that other communities have issued. Those can be guidance documents for us to take a look at, none of them is binding, but they're suggestive of what is happening out there.
How about communities that have recently finished the process? Know who?
We've got, we have examples of updated master plans. For example, I know Hudson completed theirs last year. They had hired a VHB as their consultant. Acton, within the last several years, had completed it, and, and we can share with you the, you know, list of who's, who's done it recently. That's great.
When we're selecting a designer or contractor, is it the process by which we would evaluate qualifications as well as price, or is it simply just qualifications?
Simply qualifications, yeah.
And we negotiate with the price?
And then, then you'd negotiate with the-
Okay.
With the best proposer, the selected proposer.
So, it's similar to federal, then? Okay.
I have a question about cost. The, the constraint or the budget seems to be what is currently in the, proposed in the warrant totally. Sometimes there's a relationship between quality of work and how much you spend. What I'm asking is, if the committee feels that more funds are needed to, to basically up the quality of the output, is the process the usual? We go through the warrant and town meeting?
It's, it would be, it would require a trip back to town meeting, but actually, that's a good question, and from a timing standpoint, it won't pose a problem for, for this group, because if what we're, if we're, if we're saying our deadline is December or January, we're having a contract, awarding a contract, we've got a November town meeting. So, that if in the process of, when you're reviewing proposals, and you're getting down to the nitty-gritty of who's your, you know, what do you think it's going to cost? Well, you know, gee, it's 250, or it's 260 instead of 213. Can we get that increment? That we would have the opportunity to go get it at the, to fall town meeting without missing the, and, and not to commit any funds that haven't arrived yet, but that we're, once we get the FEMA reimbursement for the 75% of qualifying snow and ice money that we'll have, that will, that will free up some money that would be available for spending at the November town meeting.
And in the financial planning process, I think we've consistently referred to this as an estimate, $200,000 to $250,000.
Yeah, we've used the estimate of 250, yeah. In terms of what, when we told town meeting voters last, last May, and even this November, what did we think? The cost, total cost would be 250. What, what do we have on account right now? We, we would, we would have, be a 213, hopefully by, you know, the end of the evening on Monday night. But, but that's only because it's the limit of what our resources are right now. We will have additional funds once we get the FEMA reimbursement, that we could spend more money.
So, in regard to the price quality, is there a way to, I know we can look at RFPs, but maybe we don't know from those RFPs what the end result is. Is there a way to chase down companies which really have a really good proven track record, and then try to go after them? Almost prequalify some firms ahead of time?
No.
You can't do that.
What, what you could do, though, you can make sure they get the RP, but you can't-
Okay. But that was part of- Yeah, that's, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Looking at what towns have completed the process recently, and seeing who's happy with their work, and whether we're happy with their work.
Right. Yeah, we want references to-
And that will be part of the process as a whole. Right, that would be part of the process anyway, that by the time we're reviewing proposals and, and interviewing the consultants-
Yeah.
If there are unhappy clients out there, that that's information that we would, that we would need to know about, and we'll find out by talking to the folks who they've done work for.
Would that be part of the process to find out kind of our, our target consultants? Is that something that we can do?
Experience-
And make, and make sure those people get the RFPs?
We'd be looking, I assume, experience qualifications, past performance-
Yep.
Capacity to do the work within our timeframes, those kind of things.
Yep.
That's how typically we've seen it.
And what we have access to is our town council, where it can give us very clear guidance on what is allowed and not allowed under the Massachusetts general statutes for procurement.
Yep.
That way, we don't go afoul in any way, shape, or form. Rich has extensive experience, has been mentioned on the PMBC, had been on the PMBC also as we went through some of these. There's a lot of experience on the PMBC, and actually bringing some of those folks in also to help us as we go through this. But that's a rabbit hole I'd rather not go down this evening.
Yep.
But it is a rabbit hole we definitely will go down.
Any more questions of Keith on this?
I'm actually a MCPPO certified Massachusetts purchasing official.
Too many letters.
MCPPO.
Just to, just to comment on the timeframe, though, if November is, sounds like it's a deadline, semi-deadline, in terms of wanting to have a number for town meeting, it would be nice to have an idea what the cost is going to be.
An acronym's in this.
And if it's, the selection is going to be mainly on qualifications first, and then negotiation, I think it's, looking at these timelines, November might be aggressive to get an actual number in hand.
Well, I think what we, I think what we could do, and again, part of it is that, and in fact, it's not even November, the deadline for town meeting, I dare say, is late September, in terms of when do we put the articles in the warrant.
Okay.
And if we, and I think we could predict even right now, that putting in a supplemental funding request-
Sure.
For the master plan update is something that we could just program in for the fall, because we've, we hope to have 250 available.
Yeah.
And as we, and, but, we don't have any, any extra money right now, because we're, we're just tied up.
But as you pointed out earlier, we don't need it either.
We'll, we'll get it, we will get it soon. We will have it in time for November town meeting, and-
Here's what I'd like to say on that, because we will have viewed other towns, we've seen what they've done, and how much it has cost them. That'll begin to scope out how much it may cost us in the long run. We certainly want to caution that we don't appear that we're just incrementally asking the town for more money than the next meeting, more money, the next meeting, more money. That's not fair to the town. As we think through this, right now, one of the disadvantages we have is a public body, and that is, anybody who wants to bid already knows at least the top end of our budget. So, that they're already, there's an advantage for the bidders at that point. They're, they're going to try and bid to win, for sure, and, but already, they know about how much we have to spend. And in private business, we know, you can keep things a little bit more to the chest, if you will, so that the folks that would be bidding don't know your total budget. And certainly, you work with them a little bit, so there's an understanding, so it doesn't come in a billion dollars for a million dollar project, but-
I mean, federal work.
Federal work, yeah.
Yeah. One other suggestion, just what, sort of what came out of here, that you may, you may want to invite in your counterparts from another town, or several towns, that have completed the project, and what are, you know, what are the pointers that they've got? We'll certainly get insight on who's out there doing work and doing it well, or whatever, but where, where there are others who've just gone through this process, it would be helpful to get some.
Thank you. That's it, you know, certainly, you're going to be able to get a line on other master plans, other RFQs that are out there, if they're re- floated, successful ones, contracts that will be up to view, and then certainly bringing in members from other committees in other towns who have gone through the process themselves very recently, will be a great help for us. Keith mentioned two very important items, if you will. One was process, and the other was public input. And the public input being really the most important, because that'll help to find the process, too, as we go through that. I'd like, and I'd offer to you all to think of us as facilitators. We're not the planning committee writ large, and that's the end of it. We are going to be 12 people from the community, that are going to be working with everybody in the community to come forward with a master plan, that is, the town's master plan, to go forth for the 10, 15 years or so afterwards. And on that, as a selectman, I will be representing article that is asking for the $100,000. I'll put together some slides for that, so it's going to be from the selectman's perspective of supporting the warrant article, but certainly it's going to speak to this. And Mike, as far as the timeline goes, you know, I was certainly anticipating two years, as Keith said, and had said, I would have set this as a goal this evening, but at some point, we set a goal, and the notion one I've already thought in my own particular mind is that May of '17, at that town meeting, is when we're presenting and getting, yes, I think you did a good job, or you get the thumbs down. Not cast in stone or concrete at this point, obviously, but it goes in line with Keith's said, about two years, because that seems appropriate. In fact, if you look at the 2002 plan, they really started the process in 1998, when they got together and started looking at goals and things that they wanted to see in the town, and then finally published, almost four years later.
Is that the process? A town meeting literally accepts it by vote?
Well, well, that's an, that's an interesting question, because the, because many communities have, while the statute says the planning board adopts the master plan, many communities bring goal statements, bring some abbreviated form of the master plan to town meeting, because you want to have the seal of approval from, from the voters. And that's typically how, how many communities have done.
Always good to know who the audience is.
Are all of our, I'm sorry, are all meetings that we have all televised?
It'd be nice to have them that way.
Every meeting that we-
At the very least, I think we can be televised every time, if not live, certainly taped. And that's just coordination, and that's a great segue into scheduling. So, let's talk about scheduling.
I didn't know we had to do that.
No, you're excellent.
Oh, geez, thanks.
We realize you're brilliant, but you just continue to shine even brighter. Thank you.
My skirt is getting a little spooked up there.
Okay, on that. Now, many of us are on different boards, and you have a life, too, outside of town government. So, let's start talking about what nights we may want to try and meet, what sort of curiosity would seem to make sense, at least to get the ball going at this point, and then we can adjust fire as necessary.
I hate to say it, on Monday and Wednesdays, I'll be teaching in the fall.
Okay.
And in the spring.
And selectmen have Mondays?
Selectmen have Mondays.
So, that's, that Mondays seems to be a bad night.
Pinnacle has Tuesday, but I'll work around it.
We could do the every other, right, sort of thing.
Forget in between, yes.
We can coordinate that.
We have Thursdays, right?
Thursday, Thursday, along.
School committee, school committee is Thursday as well, so that's not a great...
Okay, Thursday, or?
Every other, typically every other.
So every other, we throw a Thursday in there where he's not involved.
But for the moment, is Tuesday sounding good for most folks?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah.
The only thing is the Rotary Board meeting.
Okay, monthly. And twice a month for FinCom usually, right?
Which, which seasonal, depends on the, depends on the time of year.
If you carve out, if you carve out the, say, second, Tuesday is a month, then that would allow everyone else to, the other boards to work around.
Easy to plan for.
If you're amenable to this, then I'm going to, we're going to use Tuesday, I'm going to ask Keith to come up with a schedule.
Okay.
We're at the end of April now, why don't you at least take us to the first week or so of September, please? And, you know, geek a click with other activities you see on the town calendar, and then we can begin a departure from there.
Is it every Tuesday?
No, no, no.
No, no.
I'm thinking twice a month, folks.
Yeah.
But we'll take a look at when holidays are, or other activities going on.
Might skip, might do once a month in August, or something like that.
Yes, be careful.
Once we procure a company to deal, work with us, they're going to be handling the majority of the ball, and then we're going to critique them as they come along.
I think that's part of it, but always, 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 we're reaching out to the community. And it's easy to say, and becomes cliché-ish in a way, but we're going to have public forums, I should think, we're going to have presentations, I should think. For example, I mentioned town meeting two years from now, and we'll be given a little bit of a update this town meeting, but I would anticipate every single town meeting, every six months, in essence, we're telling the town, at least in that public forum, where we're at. I think the planning board can take a responsibility periodically at a planning board meeting, five, 10, 15-minute update, whatever you think's appropriate. Board of Selectmen similarly. The two boards charge primarily with the responsibility, but then each of you that are on a committee and representing that committee, you should go back to your committee also, and invite backup if you wish, too, if you want to take someone else from the committee with you, when you're on the agenda, to tell the sustainability committee, here's where we are on that. And because now, if you think about these various committees, each one has a slightly different constituency. Certainly, you can say the planning board and the board of selectmen have the entire town as their constituencies, that's absolutely true, but some people pay more attention to some of these other committees than they may to a different one. So that's where you're going to be received, or assuming approaching, different constituencies throughout the town, and that's the value of having folks from different ones. And then your civic organizations, you belong to a civic organization, ask the leadership of that organization that you have an opportunity to brief this also, and let people in the civic organizations know where we stand, because most of our civic organizations, while certainly comprise some people from outside of town, are primarily people from town. They are our residents, they're the people we're working for in this regard. So that, and we'll formalize, perhaps not the right word, but certainly we'll introduce and think of some more ideas on how we truly reach out, and get the most people involved. The 2002 plan, there's over 100 names on that plan, or inside of that plan, as folks who helped out. Certainly, 11 of us at the table right now. Okay? So, you know, real fast public math, what's that, 9%? Yeah, so we're a little short at the moment. So we've got a recruitment effort to go out, which, recruitment for this committee also, we need a 12th person. That's what the board of selectmen and the planning board constituted this committee as, is a 12-member committee. So let's go out and look for a 12th member, please, actively recruit and bring folks in. Application process is on the town website, Keith will collect those applications, present them to the board of selectmen and the planning board, and those two boards will jointly appoint, which just says all of us have been, a 12th member. So please, let's reach out. And then, if we think in football terms, the 12th member, you know, which football coach doesn't want the 12th member out there? You know, and stay away from the sexist terms, the 12th man, 12th woman, the 12th person. You know, the crowd, you know, cheering, and, you know, hollering, and helping the home team. You've got to think in those terms, too. So the whole town becomes our 12th person. Okay? So, I set an hour for tonight, we're staying inside of that, that's great. Punctuality is important, because all your time is valuable. So we'll have agendas, there's times that we won't meet a time, for whatever reason, because it makes good sense just to continue on a great thought. I'm going to ask you to think, as we go through this, though, brainstorming. We're all going to have good ideas, and each of us is going to have a reason to critique somebody else's good idea. For a little while, as we go forward, let's just listen to the good ideas, okay? The good idea fairy is going to be able to fly around for a little while, before we swat it with the fly swatter, okay?
First the skirt, now the fairy, sorry.
So, I'd like us to have that kind of mindset. Listen to ideas, and just listen, listen, and listen, write them down, let's just keep a log as we go through. And then at some point, we start putting it all together, and we start looking, go, keep that one, keep that one, maybe not, yes, no, that one's...
Chairman, I think Keith had a cautionary note to sound here.
Well, I just wanted to say, in terms of our very next meeting, that if, if we could look at two weeks from, does two weeks from tonight seem reasonable? I'm saying three weeks from tonight is not an option, that's, well, it's our anniversary, it's only 31 years, so...
What, your anniversary in town?
No.
We going on this date with you, or?
Yeah, it'll be a blind date.
That'll be May 12th.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the 12th.
That's my birthday.
Oh, okay, so...
Is it really?
What a present.
They'd come to this meeting, or go out to dinner with, with...
Either one.
Yeah, you can come out with us on the 19th.
You're a winner right away.
When I thought you were going to address was communications.
Oh, I'll get to that, just to...
Yeah, yeah, we'll do, yeah. In terms of inter...
Open meeting law, and all that kind of stuff.
Right, that's the other, and, that's the other caveat, that because you're...
Hold on, we're going to stay focused, too. We came up with, we're talking about a date, let's stick with that for the moment. Is next Tuesday okay with everybody? I shouldn't mean two weeks from now.
Do we have a sort of, like, is the first Tuesday, or the 30th Tuesday?
Well, for now, it's the second, it would be the second Tuesday.
Right, but I mean, consistently.
We will strive for that.
Okay.
Yes.
It's easier to bring the calendar, easier to plan.
It appears to work, let's see, that would be May 12.
12, 26. 26 would be the day after Memorial Day.
The finance committee does not have a set schedule after town meeting yet, so Bonnie could work with Betsy Bowling about making sure we don't connect there.
Okay, so we're looking, so tentatively, we're looking at the second or fourth, second and fourth.
And are we talking 6:00, 7:00?
Is it 6:00 PM?
That's kind of early.
Yeah.
Later, that would be better.
It was done tonight because of other things.
6:30, 7?
7.
7.
7.
I'll be coming out of...
7, okay.
7 is me.
7, all right, good.
7, yeah.
Okay.
In noon for Peter.
We have dinner.
Next two meetings, I would not be at a town.
Okay, that's going to happen.
It's going to happen, yeah.
You guys know where we're going to be a month from now? I don't know where I'm going tomorrow.
We'll be here, you'll all be here for the next two years.
To Paul's point about open meeting law, Keith mentioned this early, only the committee does stuff. Each of us individually does not. Now, you saw that email I sent out to you about the Boston Globe article? Plenty fine, all you're doing is just information, there's no deliberations going on, there's no backroom deals being made. So if you find something that's really good and interesting reading, and you think it'd be good prep, or at least background information for the next meeting, you know, as you're going through and doing your research, there's nothing wrong in sending that out.
Do we want, do we want it to go through the chair?
Yeah, I would suggest that it go to, to Marin and me, if you've got things going out, just because anything that we send out to you is not, we are not subject to the open meeting law, you are. The other thing about, and it's a, it's an easy trap to fall into, but if you read something and you agree with it, that's expressing an opinion, and at which point, you've deliberated and violated the open meeting law. So even to say, hey, I enjoyed reading that article, Paul, that you sent, I agree with what it says, is a violation of the open meeting law.
So, so everything goes through you guys, to us?
So have it, have it go through the staff.
Through us.
And that's a good...
Just as a good catch-all. That way, you know...
So you'll be, you'll be the receiver of all this information, then you turn around and say it to somebody else?
No, but they, but they can disseminate it to us.
Yeah, we can, we can send you information.
But you can't turn around and say, Paul sent a good letter out, and say, Peter, you ought to read that, it's a good, good information.
No, if I, if I say it's good, I'm not subject to the open meeting law, and so the open meeting law allows me to say it, it doesn't allow you to say it, and it doesn't make sense, but that's...
Keith says it's good, it will be good, so read it.
Well, Keith's saying it came from you, so I mean, we're dogmating the tail, what are we doing?
Oops, oops.
Well, we've all been on enough committees, and understand the OML here, Massachusetts said, we don't want to violate it in practice, nor in spirit, so there's no problem airing on the side of caution.
You don't need to be sworn in as well?
Probably do, don't we, Keith?
Yeah.
So at the next meeting, at the clerk here, yeah, could we ask Diane to do that for us?
Sure.
Or can you do it?
Upstairs till 7:00, you see?
You can march in the remaining two minutes, you can go out and get sworn in, if she's...
Those that are...
Should we ever come down and swear us all in at once?
Thank you.
Yeah. Ah, yes.
There's a commitment, you've got to live in town for another 10 years.
Some of the, Keith, some of the documents you mentioned of the towns, other towns have, either their RFQs that they have sent out, and/or their products that they produced, can that stuff be posted someplace, so we can all access for review?
Yes, I can send you those links, for, like, for example, we've gone through, and just to show you as one example, we've gone through and identified where some documents are, here's the link where the town of Burlington's RFP for its master plan update is posted at their website, we've got half a dozen such documents that are, we've been able to find in a quick search, and, and so, yeah, we can, we can be getting that, that kind of information out to you all.
And where would that reside, just in the emails you send out, or is there going to be, is there some kind of file, shared folder, if it's available?
Well, what we, well, what we could do, if you like, is that there is a, find it, that you have a page at your, at the, at the town website.
Yep.
And what I could certainly do is link some of these documents, and we, there...
Right.
The staff knows how to set it up, that we could put folders in there that you can link, and that the public can link to look at other documents.
Sample documents, and stuff like that would be very helpful, I think.
And the beauty of that, it's putting on the town website, is that other folks get to see it also.
Right, yeah, happy to do that.
Absolutely, that public outreach.
Yeah, that would be a great, great thing to do.
Yeah, and you've, you've got the page called up there now.
It already has who your chair and vice chair are.
Yeah, Diane, can I?
How did that happen? I just updated.
When we leave a board of select meeting, 10 minutes later, it's on the web as to what was said.
Yep.
Well, before I go into the meeting, it's...
You already know what we're going to say.
It's already on the web, and I had just pressed publish.
You know, Jeff Dunham over here, and one of us is Akmed, one of us is Peanut. Well, this is...
So we, so that's a great suggestion, we will, we will set up some folders that are linked from this webpage, that will have resource documents available for the committee and the public.
Keith, is there a place where I can find the open meeting rules?
There's nothing to nobody, and you're all set.
You type in ME OML.
What?
Just type in ME OML, web, and you'll be taken.
M, M, M.
You'll go right there.
Put it on the website.
Yeah, I think we've, I think we've got a link somewhere, too.
The other thing I'm interested in, because I'm just curious how the state or town procurement rules are, how they might differ from what I'm used to, is, is there, where is that information available as to, like, how we have to do contracts, and what is the rules and engagement?
Best, best resource for that is the DCAM website. They've got models of all the, all the basic documents, and...
DCAM?
DCAM. The Capital, Division of Capital Asset Management, it's D-C-A-M-M. If you go, just Google Mass, D-C-A-M-M.
Okay, we have Diane on here, thank you Diane for coming on down.
The other place is the IG's office, Inspector General's.
And again, probably on the town website, too.
Right up on one. Do you swear it's in by haiku? That'd be awesome.
Diane, can you do us in mass, or do you need to do it individually?
I'll, to the group.
Wow. Like a moony wedding.
If you're ready, we're ready.
All right. Ready your right hands for me?
Do you have to stand?
We all solemnly swear that you will faithfully and passionately discharge all duties incumbent upon you as members of the Master Plan Update Steering Committee, to the best of your abilities, understand the rules and regulations of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Towne Lilson, and the Constitution of the United States, so help you God.
I hear you.
Okay, so I will need you all to write your names and email addresses, so I can get this sent off to you. You'll need to do the online ethics, if you haven't done it within the last year. You'll also get a letter from me stating that you have done it, as well as sending that off to me, you will need to send back to me. The letter will state that you're going to receive from me the, all of the documentation that I have, which is online ethics, the board of selectmen's code of ethics and conducts, code of ethic and conduct, the EEOC, and all of the, all the documentation that is required for you to be on, even though it is a committee, and you are volunteering your time, you are still considered a, an employee of the Towne Lilson, and thus you must abide by all rules and regulations of the Towne Lilson.
Will you send up all these references to these links and documents?
I will.
The ethics is a, is a time-consuming thing, it's like a little exam. You'll, you'll enjoy it.
You can't fail. Commonwealth of Massachusetts doesn't allow you to fail, so...
Are you sure you want it to be that way?
Didn't, didn't you?
Try B.
Didn't you fail?
Fail every single time, but you took it for me.
As we're doing that, does anybody have any other business? Because we'll be able to join here shortly, otherwise.
Good.
Looking for a motion to adjourn, Amos? Yes, sir, I am. A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor?
Hi.
Thanks.
It's the first thing we've been unanimous on all night, right?
Boy, you forgot to turn the switch.